I think it might also be... That makes sense, so we'll talk more about it. All right. Thank you all so much. I apologize for starting a little bit late. Take responsibility for that. We're gonna start this meeting. If, uh, I'm gonna add, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? It's 20 to 20. Please call the new roll. We got a few people shifting around the table as well, so...
Absolutely. Good evening. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman, Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval, Mr. Vine, Mr. Davis, Mayor Benjamin.
Here. We have four members of our Columbia Youth Commission, Faith Robertson, Addie Grace Cook, London Patel, and Hayden Cohen. You're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, ladies. As my daughters tell me, the future is female. So the young ladies are the ones who showed up tonight, so...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. You all know we have an active and robust Youth Commission doing some great work helping with policymaking. And I will tell you, just knowing several of these young leaders individually, Columbia's future is bright, very bright, because of the leadership. So glad to have you this evening. Reverend McDowell?
Let us wear our hedges. Gracious God, for the wonderment of life, health, and strength, for the ability to be in this place, to fellowship each to the other, but yet to understand the policy issues that are before us. We ask your blessings that you might touch us individually and collectively. Allow your hand to move from seat to seat. And as our city continues to grow and prosper, as it continues to move in a direction where hopefully lives are changed, we ask for your nearness. We ask for a calmness to overshadow our city. That as we hear the various gunshots and the violence that has captivated not only our city, but this nation of ours, we pray for a common effect. We ask it and claim it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend McDowell? I'm City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. At this time, we would ask for Council to adopt the agenda holding item 40 and noting that item 41 is part of the items from the work session. Mr. Mayor, the Council will take up the redesign of our city flag on January 21st.
Motion. So second discussion.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir. Mr. McDowell?
Madam City Manager, if you would, that is item number 40. If you would defer that.
Yes, sir.
Defer item number 40.
Yes, sir. All right. Noted. It's been moved and probably seconded. I'll move the previous question. Clerk Colerole?
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman, Mr. McDowell, Mr. Duval, Mr. Vine, Mr. Davis, Mayor Benjamin.
Mr. Mayor, we would ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda as outlined. Seeing none, Council is asked to approve the November 19th, 2019, November 25th, 2019, and December 3rd, 2019, City Council Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion? Did you, oh, said you want to speak? Or are you just referencing? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Sit back down then, okay? Just wanted to make sure we had the opportunity. Okay. Madam City Manager, consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Council is asked to approve the consent agenda items 8 through 28.
So move.
Second. Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Duval, for discussion.
Item 8 is a $30,000 expense for the runoff election. I apologize to the Council for causing that $30,000 expense, and I will try to earn it back during my four years.
Well, just give a partial payment now.
They moved in second discussion. Seeing none, move the previous question. I'm sorry, Mr. Rickaman. Get your microphone, Daniel. Turn it up.
I meant to ask earlier today on item 18...
I think it might also be.
If that makes sense, we'll talk more about it. All right. Thank you all so much. I apologize for starting a little bit late. Take responsibility for that. We're gonna start this meeting. If, uh, I'm gonna, I'm gonna add, I'm sorry, Madam Clerk, would you please call the role? It's 20 to 20. Please call the, the new role. We got a few, a few people shifting around the, the table as well, so.
Absolutely. Good evening. Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman. Mr. McDowell. Mr. Duval.
Rose.
Mr. Vine.
Here.
Mr. Davis.
Yeah.
Mayor Benjamin.
Here. We have four members of our Columbia Youth Commission, Faith Robertson, Addie Grace Cook, London Patel, and Hayden Cohen. You're gonna lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Come on, ladies. As my daughters tell me, the future is female. Uh, so the, the young ladies are the ones who showed up tonight, so. All right.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, ladies. Um, you all know we have an active and robust, uh, Youth Commission doing some great work helping with policymaking. And I will tell you, just knowing, um, several of these, uh, young leaders individually, um, Columbia's future is bright, very bright, uh, because of the leadership. So, so glad to have you this evening. Reverend McDowell, would you?
Let us wear a hedge. Gracious God, for the wonderment of life, health, and strength. For the ability to be in this place, to fellowship each to the other, but yet to understand the policy issues that are before us. We ask your blessings that you might touch us individually and collectively. Allow your hand to move from seat to seat. And as our city continues to grow and prosperous, as it continues to move in a direction where hopefully lives are changing, changed. We ask for your nearness. We ask for a calmness to overshadow our city. That as we hear the various gunshots and the violence that has captivated not only our city, but this nation of ours. We pray for a common effect. We ask it and claim it in your name. Amen.
Amen.
Reverend McDowell, I'm City Manager.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. Good evening. At this time, we would ask for council to adopt the agenda, holding item forty, and noting that item forty-one is part of the, um, items from the work session, Mr. Mayor. The council will take up the redesign of our city flag on January twenty-first.
There a motion? So, second, moved in second discussion.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir, Mr. McDowell.
Um, Madam City Manager, if you would. That is item number forty. If you would defer that.
Yes, sir.
Defer item number forty.
Yes, sir. All right.
Thank you.
Noted. Um, so moved and properly seconded. I'll move the previous question. Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman, Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Mr. Mayor, um, we would ask for any public input related to the items on the agenda as outlined. Seeing none, council is asked to approve the November nineteenth, two thousand nineteen, November twenty-fifth, two thousand nineteen, and December third, two thousand nineteen, City Council Meeting Minutes.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
Second. All right. Moved in second. Any discussion? Any discussion? Seeing none with the previous question. Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman, Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye. We do have, before we take up the, uh, the items on the agenda, Mr. Imbo. Andrew Imbo, I got that right? Did you want to speak to item twenty-four? Would you please do it now?
Which item?
Twenty-four. And I'm taking it up now because it's on the consent agenda, so, please.
What was that?
You, you, did you, oh, so do you want to speak, or are you, are you just referencing? Okay. All right, thank you. All right. Sit back down then, okay? Just wanted to make sure we had the opportunity. Um, okay. Um, Madam City Manager, consent agenda?
Yes, sir. Council is asked to approve the consent agenda items eight through twenty-eight.
So, move.
Second. Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Duval, for discussion.
Item eight is a thirty thousand dollar expense for the runoff election, and I apologize to the council for causing that thirty thousand dollar expense, and I will try to, uh, earn it back during my four years.
Well, just give a partial payment now.
They, um, moved in second. Discussion, seeing none with the previous question. I'm sorry, Mr. Du, Mr. Rickaman. Get your microphone, Daniel. Make it not on.
I meant to ask earlier today on item eighteen, is that for new work, or is that for, for the emergency work? And where that?
We have a valve that's been closed off for a very long time, the flood, and this will open up the water quality, and that's what we presented to the city of Forest Acres.
Okay, so this is that project?
Yes, a brand-new water line going in, and it'll be right there by Trenon Plaza. No.
Just wanted to make sure that was the project, because the Forest Acres folks had gotten called, called us several times.
All right. Items eight through twenty-eight, um, seeing no more discussion. We'll move the previous question. Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Item twenty-nine, moving into a period of presentations, I would ask our police chief, William Skip Holbrook, to come forward for recognition of investigator Tyson Haas as the two thousand nineteen Richland County Multidisciplinary Team Participant of the Year.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson, um, Mayor and Council. It's my privilege to be here to recognize, um, one of our outstanding investigators, police officers, uh, father, and just a person in general. Tyson Haas is a sergeant assigned to Special Victims Unit. He started with the Colum- Columbia Police Department in August of two thousand ten. He has a bachelor's degree from Ohio State University. He's worked in a, a number of positions with the police department to include, um, the old Pace Team, our Community Response Team in the North Region. He's a distinguished graduate of the South Carolina Criminal Justice Academy. Some of the things that has been written about him, um, that led to this award is investigator Haas has displayed a commitment to the department's vision, exhibit strong leadership skills. He has extensive knowledge and persistence and thoroughness while working his cases, and he sets a great example for all the investigators to follow. Investigator Haas is dedicated to his role in the Special Victims Unit. He assists his fellow investigators whenever the opportunity arises. He's also a standout member of the South Carolina Internet Crimes Against Children Task Force, which is led by our Attorney General's Office. Working with the task force, he has the, um, tough task of investigating cases of sexual exploitation and solicitation of children. He is a member of the, uh, multidisciplinary team with Richland County, and that's comprised of law enforcement, um, under, uh, law enforcement personnel, medical professionals, the Metropolitan's Advocacy Center under the South Carolina Department of Mental Health, and the Department of Social Services. The group is designated to review child protective services, cases, and they have concurrent criminal investigations, in particular with the young victims that have been abused, neglected, or exploited. He was, as Ms. Wilson mentioned, was awarded the Participant of the Year, and the award engraving reads the following. "For your dedication, compassion, enthusiasm, and diligence for your service in the interest of children and justice, you are recognized and honored by your partners in the fight against child abuse." I can think of no better representative of the Columbia Police Department. Um, he certainly sets an example of all of us to follow him. He's a true partner in, um, a multidisciplined, um, task force, and we're very lucky to have him. He's, uh, joined here by his lovely wife Kelly, his son Weston. Sergeant McCracken leads the Special Victims Unit, and I'd, um, like to ask everybody to stand up, the members of the, of the unit, Sergeant McCracken. Thank you. And Mrs. Haas and Weston, come up and then.
Take over Sam's spot. Just stand on the corner.
Tyson, thank you for the work you do, man. You make, make us proud. Keep up the great work, okay?
Our next item, um, is another exciting presentation for a very much so well-deserving, um, department in our city. The presentation of the Commission on Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies Award to the Columbia-Richland nine-one-one Communication Center. Mr. Henry M. Simons will make, our Assistant City Manager for Operations, will make the presentation.
Thank you, Mayor Benjamin, our City Council, City Manager Teresa Wilson, for providing us with an opportunity to recognize the nine-one-one Communication Center on their successful accomplishment of accreditation through CLEIA, uh, which stands for the Commission of Accreditation for Law Enforcement Agencies. We have now been accredited as a department since two thousand three. We have been accredited six times, which is awesome. Accreditation occurs every three years. I am grateful for our staff, led by Jackie Richburg, who has faithfully served the city of Columbia for thirty-six and a half years.
Hmm.
Wow.
Which is awesome. This team handles thirty-five hundred calls on average every twenty-four hours, and handles over a million calls per year. Specifically, in two thousand nineteen, total calls processed, nine-one-one calls, seven-digit calls, outgoing calls. Total calls processed, one million, two-hundred-and-sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-forty-three calls. Providing assistance and saving lives one day at a time. Takes a special type of team member to deal with some of the calls that I've heard personally. I'm thankful for the service that they provide to our community. Now, I want to ask Ms. Jackie Richburg, our interim director of the nine-one-one Communication Center, to come forth and share some additional details about our accreditation. Uh, she has done an awesome job. I want to give her an opportunity to share at this time.
Simons, um, and I just want to kind of add on to what Mr. Simons said. Um, good evening, um, Mayor Benjamin, City Council members, Ms. Wilson, the CRC team, and Ms. Felicia, our accreditation manager. Without Ms. Felicia, um, she helped us just to stay focused and to do what we need to do to get it right the first time. Uh, we have two-hundred-and-seventy standards that we have to comply with, and so, um, Ms. Felicia helps us to make sure we stay within those, um, standards and make sure that we comply. And it is my absolute pleasure to share with you all how pleased we are to receive our CLEIA award. Obtaining such an award isn't an easy feat. Um, we are one of seven nine-one-one agencies in the entire state of South Carolina that's earned this fine and noble achievement. Because of CLEIA, it allows us to have checks and balances. If we say we did something, then we must prove it, and then CLEIA puts us through this rigorous test. It's like being examined under a microscope and making sure that we are in compliance. It's a challenging process, yes, yet we welcome the scrutiny, because it allows us to self-correct in areas where we may fall short and things that may be an oversight that can place the agency at a liability risk. So, it's, it's hard work, and, uh, we make it look easy, but it is hard. But it is our goal to do it right the first time, every time, and by practicing these principles, it saves everyone in the end. At nine-one-one, there's no second chances. People are always watching and listening. We are an agency of transparency. We are ethical, and we have integrity. And that's why we've earned this award six times in a row since two thousand three. And we are mighty darn proud of bringing home the gold medal yet again.
I do want our Youth Commission to know that, uh, Ms. Richburg has been here thirty-six and a half years. She started in the fifth grade.
Well, Mr. Mayor, we're starting the year off right. It's a city night with our presentations, so we've got one more outstanding recognition. I'm gonna ask our wonderful Director of Engineering, our City Engineer.
Dana.
Ms. Dana Higgins to present the FEMA National, the City of Columbia, as a FEMA National Flood Insurance Program Community Rating System Participants.
Thank you, Ms. Wilson. Thank you, Councilwoman Mayor. We are very excited to be here because we have a designation that we're gonna tell you about. Everyone knows me. I'm Director of Engineering, but I'm not sure if you've met my Deputy Director, Andrea Bowling. So, I asked her to come up here. She actually worked for Richland County as their flood plan manager, and we met during the flood, so I'm happy that she's here, and she actually has all the answers if you have questions, so. No, no pressure. So, in May of this year, or two thousand nineteen, excuse me, the City of Columbia received their designation as Class Nine Community in the Community Rating System. This is a sub-program of the National Flood Insurance Program. What is the National Flood Insurance Program? I'm glad you asked. This was a federal act back in nineteen sixty-eight to help homeowners afford federal, federal insurance, federally-backed mortgages, and apply for, uh, public assistance as well as FEMA grants. The city began their participation in nineteen eighty-one, so we're almost at forty years of participation. Currently, we have around eleven hundred policies. Our neighboring adjacent counties are Lexington has around fourteen hundred, and Richland County has around fourteen hundred. How does that look across the state? The Community Rating System consists of forty-three different cities and counties throughout the state. As you can see, most of the coastal counties participate because it gives a premium discount. Uh, the highest level is a four. It goes from one to ten, one being the strictest, and highest level, four is the highest we have in South Carolina, and that's Charleston. They have around seventeen thousand policies, and they get a reduction of around thirty percent. The City of Columbia is a Class Nine, even though we could have come in at ten, that's the beginner level, but we took a step further. We wanted to go a little bit above and beyond, so we had the documentation in place to be able to go to Class Nine. We'll continue to try to work towards those other classes. Uh, just to give you a perspective, Richland County is a Class Eight, and Lexington County is a Class Seven. So, I know you guys want to know what the impact to our citizens. Right now, we have an average premium for our homeowners at around five-hundred-and-ninety-seven dollars for flood properties, flood insurance properties. With this Class Nine designation, we will be able to save each person around twenty-two dollars for a collective twenty-five thousand dollar community savings. And this is automatic, so it's a five percent reduction. It automatically goes on their bill. There's nothing they have to submit or apply for, and I know after our two thousand fifteen flood, everybody's ready to just let things move forward. Uh, we just felt like this was really important to let y'all know about. Uh, we started this process in fall of two thousand eighteen where we had our application. They came and did an audit, had a verification visit. We actually had a lot of documentation we had to pull together, so we, uh, put together a, a position to help us with that, that will continue to help us document. A lot of the efforts we're already doing, but increased public outreach, just letting people know what they can do to protect their properties in those flood hazard zones. So, we are just here to let you know. We're very excited. Uh, you can let your constituents know, and we will continue to work towards having a higher level as we continue through the process. And I'd love to have any questions that you might have.
Mr. Duval.
Dana, do we have a, a list of those eleven hundred people that we could send out a letter and say, look what we've done? We've saved you?
Absolutely. We certainly can. We can work with FEMA, right? No? Oh, sorry. We can look into it.
We will definitely look into it.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to be able to tell them we've done something positive.
Absolutely. We'll, we'll do everything we can to get that word out, and we'll update Ms. Wilson.
Share with the media. I think, I think sharing it appropriately with the media as well.
Just the number itself out there.
Sure.
Helps.
Absolutely.
Mr. Duval. Penny's McDowell. Thank you all very much. Dana, keep up the great work, Dana. Appreciate y'all so much. I'm City Manager.
Zoning and planning matters for second reading, item thirty-two, Future Land Use Map Confirmation Amendment for forty-six twenty-four, forty-six twenty-eight, and forty-eight thirty Divine Street.
Can we do thirty-two and thirty-three together? Uh, separately?
Yes, you can.
Is the motion approved, thirty-two and thirty-three? Who's that, Howard?
I moved.
Uh, moved, moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, discussion. Move the previous question. Clerk Colerole.
Mr. Brennan. Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Yes.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin.
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin, um.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I apologize. I'm stepping out of the room now on the next three, right?
Okay.
So, I'm no, no on thirty-two, thirty-three.
Well, Mr. Mayor, um, steps out as his normal protocol on, um, items concerning Wood Creek Farms, where he resides, and item thirty-four is a Future Land Use Map Confirmation Amendment for one-eighteen Wood Creek Ridge Drive.
Is there a motion?
Move approval.
There a second?
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, if a clerk will read the roll.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Item thirty-five, zoning map amendment confirmation for one-eighteen Wood Creek Ridge Drive.
Is there a motion?
So, move.
There a second?
Second.
Probably move in second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if a clerk will read, read the roll.
Mr. Brennan, Mr. Rickaman.
Aye.
Mr. McDowell.
Yes.
Mr. Duval.
Aye.
Mr. Vine.
Aye.
Mr. Davis.
Aye.
Item thirty-six, Future Land Use Map Confirmation Amendment for four-point-nine-one acres in Wood Creek, off Wood Creek Farms Road and Wood Creek, one-point, point-one-seven acres, um, around Wood Creek Farms.
Item thirty-nine, Council is asked to approve a request for funding of the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust, 75th Anniversary of the Liberation of Auschwitz Commemoration.
Is there a motion?
It's a move. Second.
Probably move a second. Any discussion? Seeing none, if the clerk will read the roll. Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick will do it.
I think he's gone. He's halfway there.
Ordinance's first reading is an item that we've been discussing in relation to the Commercial Redevelopment Incentive Program, the Commercial Corridor Redevelopment Incentive Program. If you have any questions, Clint can come forward, but basically, this is changing the rates, as we discussed, for customers who are interested in extending their payment option. Ordinance number 2019-083, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 23, Utilities and Engineering, Article 5, Water and Sewer Rate, Section 23154, standard payment option.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick question. Someone asked me earlier today if it included irrigation meters, and I couldn't recall. Does it, it does not?
No, ma'am, it does not. This is for the sewer.
It's water and sewer. Okay, that's what I told them, but I wanted to make sure. Okay.
All right, any more discussion? With the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Other matters, item thirty-nine, Council is asked to approve a request for funding of the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust, 75th Anniversary of the Liberation of Auschwitz Commemoration.
It's a move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? With the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Patrick will do it.
I think he's gone. He's halfway there.
Ordinance's first reading is an item that we've been discussing in relation to the Commercial Redevelopment Incentive Program, the Commercial Corridor Redevelopment Incentive Program. If you have any questions, Clint can come forward, but basically, this is changing the rates, as we discussed, for customers who are interested in extending their payment option. Ordinance number 2019-083, amending the 1998 Code of Ordinances of the City of Columbia, South Carolina, Chapter 23, Utilities and Engineering, Article 5, Water and Sewer Rate, Section 23154, standard payment option.
So moved.
Second.
Discussion?
Just a quick question. Someone asked me earlier today if it included irrigation meters, and I couldn't recall. Does it, it does not?
No, ma'am, it does not. This is for the sewer.
It's water and sewer. Okay, that's what I told them, but I wanted to make sure. Okay.
All right, any more discussion? With the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Other matters, item thirty-nine, Council is asked to approve a request for funding of the South Carolina Council on the Holocaust, 75th Anniversary of the Liberation of Auschwitz Commemoration.
It's a move. Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? With the previous question, Court Colorado.
Mr. Brennan? Mr. Rickaman?
Aye.
Mr. McDowell?
Yes.
Mr. Duval?
Aye.
Mr. Devine?
Aye.
Mr. Davis?
Aye.
Mayor Benjamin?
Aye.
All right. We have no boards and commissions, and I think we're going to take most of this up next time, Ashley, several. All right, so we only have a few citizens who signed to speak. First, Minister Mustafa.
Welcome. Yours. How you doing? Good, well. First and foremost, happy 2020 to each and every one of you. I'm here on behalf of San Cofer Institute. First and foremost, Mayor, we want to thank you for meeting with us on several occasions. San Cofer Institute is the Right Supersess Program in the Beth the Bishop, and we're here today to have some acts. And the act is, we want the local government, the city council, to input us into your budget to help us in the Beth the Bishop. I don't need to tell you guys about the Beth the Bishop. Beth the Bishop, which is called the North Horn Estate, 1972, it's been around since 1972. We want to thank Honorable McDowell for coming there on many occasions, sitting with us, looking, helping us get this thing together. We want to really thank him. While being there with this after-school program, and let me be real clear, we have made a major impact with the children and the parents there, just in the six months that we've been there. Major impact. And it's been challenging also, make no mistake about that. But what we need is some resources. What we need is some funding. Why? Because it is only right. 1972, as we do this program, after-school program, with the children, we bring in their grades up, we bring in their reading up, but we don't have enough tutors, okay? We don't have enough tutors. You know, we thank Benedict, USC, Columbia College, and Allen, and we thank Ms. McDowell for that, for reaching out and bringing those tutors. But it's only been lately, three or four of us. So, we need resources. So, we want to be inputting into your budget to help us. We also, I think, Ms. McDowell, we have a meeting supposed to be coming up, and we'd like for each and every one of you guys to be involved. We want to also thank you, Mr. Duval, because while at the Beth the Bishop as an advocate, there's been many issues with the living arrangement. We have children going to bed, dealing with bedbugs. We have children and mothers going to bed with sewer backing up into their apartment. Since 1972, some of the, some of the carpet never even been moved, so we want some assistance. I know my time is up, but let me rush on and say this right here. We must leave a legacy behind. We must leave a legacy behind. We just can't sit, sit in positions when we have an opportunity to change the condition. Ninety percent of the Beth the Bishop is females, single mothers. We need your help. We want your assistance. We need your support.
Thank you. Thank you so much. All right. Ms. Cecil Johnson?
Good evening, Mayor and Council and members. Today, my name is Cecil Johnson, and I just want to give a little data. I am from San Cofer Institute also. So, for those of us who don't know, we are in 29203, and 29203 has forty thousand people, of which eighty-two percent are black. They represent about thirty percent of the city's population. The median household income in 29203 is $30,514, which is 20,000 less than the state average. Thirty-three percent of the people who live in 29203 are in poverty, versus 23 percent for the City of Columbia, and it is 52 percent higher than the national average.